Evening, everybody. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Terry, can you confirm that we're in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you could please call and roll.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Zertz?
Here.
Okay. So the first thing that we have on the agenda tonight is to adjourn to closed session. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.851G.
The move.
Second.
And Terry, if you could take a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zertz?
All right, we are adjourned to closed session. We will reconvene at approximately 7:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. We have reconvened after our closed session. The board took no official action during closed session. At this time, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. We're back with the school year starting to having our student leaders here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's is Flynn. It is Luke R. Luke R. is a fifth grade student at Flynn Elementary School. A member of Cub Scout PAC 128, Luke is working toward the Arrow of Light rank, which is the highest achievement in Cub scouting and will be completed in the spring. Congratulations. Luke's den is led by his parents, Teresa and Mike, who are here tonight. Through Cub Scouts, Luke has developed skills in swimming, cooking, fire starting, whittling, and first aid. This summer, he demonstrated the scout law when his teacher at the Boys and Girls Club was injured, and he responded by securing an ice pack as well as adult help for her. Luke, thank you for joining us today. If you would please come forward. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready.
My friend allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luke. When I move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda, I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
The move.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And now we'll move on to our regular recognitions. At this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Nordine, board members, student reps, and distinguished guests this evening. Tonight, we've got one recognition at the school level. Locas Lane recently received state level recognition from the Wisconsin RTI Center for strong systemic implementation in reading, math, and behavior. Locas Lane was one of two of our schools in the district to be recognized at the silver level in all three content areas. Do we have representatives from Langs... Oh, yep, cool, okay. We've got, I think, I'm not sure if I had passed this on to the board back in June. I believe we have, but we've also got a certificate. And here's the photo op for principal Banks. So let's do that right now.
And at the board level tonight, we have two new members of our group joining us. Starting tonight, they are our representatives from Memorial and North High School, our student representatives for the year. We're really happy to have you joining us tonight. From Memorial High School, we have Sarah Lester, and from North, Kaitlyn Weizenbeck. We look forward to your input, to the way that you're going to bring forward student ideas and connection with your peers. I've experienced a lot from you, and hopefully you'll experience a lot from us. But welcome. Thank you for being here. At this time, we'll move on to our public forum. The school board provides up to 30 minutes in which community members can address the board. Each community member is allowed four minutes. I apologize, but I will cut you off after four minutes. We ask that you state your name and address for the record. The board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor anyone connected with the school system in our public forum. Tonight, our first speaker is Jose Alberge. And if you just want to, usually we'll just have you come up to the desk there. Thank you. That just helps our microphone catch it for those watching at home.
I'm Jose Alberge, 303 Garfield Avenue, 54701. I'm here tonight as a parent, community member, and voter, wanting to reaffirm the work school board members, district staff, teachers, and volunteers do and have done in providing unique resources for all student needs. The federal lawsuit brought forth by the marginal organization Parents Protecting Our Children, which is made up of just a handful of parents, does not represent the will of the entire community who voted and decided on a path we believe to be beneficial to all families and caregivers and the children in their care. The term parental rights comes from the group's misunderstanding of a Supreme Court decision that changed how we interpret due process in the Constitution, which has always acknowledged that children have the same right to due process as adults. The court case, however, is about assisted suicide. The district's gender support plan is a data-driven, informed response to the health of the minors it has promised to serve. But this group would liken how schools provide care to transgender minors to assisted suicide should tell us about the hate behind Parents Protecting Our Children's agenda, to spread misinformation, and about the purposeful harm the group wishes to do to kids. The misrepresentation of religion in the suit, moreover, does not speak for the way members of the community practice their various faiths, nor should it mean that a few individuals should get to hold the rest of the community hostage through the misuse of the legal system or through abuse of rhetoric aimed at those who have volunteered their time to help steward the institutions that benefit everyone and keep schools open to all. The personal animosity in their language is harmful to our community. It divides by introducing mistrust and fear and distracts from our ability to focus on building the healthy environments our kids actually need in order to develop soundly as productive and democratic citizens, which is why students must take a 100-question civics exam meant to exhibit the best of what this country believes in and upholds upon graduation. The fear this group is trying to monger ignores the basic fact that if a student has a gender support plan, it's because a loving and understanding parent is most likely sitting in the room with school staff, filling it out with them or for them. The fear that something or someone is manipulating children speaks more to the anxiety this group suffers as a result of their own radical marginalization, a self-imposed alienation, and exile from the common sense and reason this community uses to move forward in history, not backward. They no longer get to hold us or our children hostage with their irrational and radical beliefs. We will no longer ignore their attempts at dismantling our schools or our community. I am here to affirm the work that goes into providing services, attention, and care for all kids, all households, and families. To the so-called group, you don't represent us, you don't speak for our children, you don't get to infringe on our right to open and public education. If you so want to get involved, go down to South and help prepare the roof, read a book to kids at the library, hand out food in the cafeteria, volunteer your time. I also have a parental right as a citizen of Eau Claire to let my kids be healthy and provided for at school. That's what I voted for, that's what I'm here to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pete Adler.
Pete Adler, N 6898 North Prairie Lane. I'd like to give a little history and perspective of why I'm addressing the board again and why I'm frustrated. I retired this past school year, as many of you are aware. I served the Ocre Area School District and this community for 31 years, as did many of my colleagues. In those 31 years, I was very passionate about what I did. I gave back in an excess of two full teaching years and sick time. I coached four sports each year and was athletic director for a total of 20 years. I reported to work one and a half hours before school started for my entire 31 years, which would be equivalent to five more teaching years. I felt strongly about my job, about the job I did and was proud of the obligation I fulfilled. What happened to the retirees was a shame, and what is happening to employees who speak up is a shame. I was on the first character education committee that formed the core values of this district. I've seen many board members come and go, along with many administrators. Past boards and leaders of the district held up to the district's obligations to their people and were transparent along the way. Why has this changed? I think as the Ocre Area School District continues to see the shortage of teachers and the morale within the school buildings continue to decline, as it has the last few years, this board will need to look into the function of their organization. The executive team downtown has become so powerful that staff are afraid to speak up to injustices, along with classroom changes that are being made downtown that affect teachers without teacher input. The union leadership is no longer a voice for its members as there is a conflict of interest when the leader is both an employee and paid by the district. Basic policies and procedures laid out in the handbook are not even followed when dealing with employees, just to name a few. The stuff going on behind closed doors without the knowledge of the board is very unhealthy as an organization and is something that should be investigated and questioned. As current school board members, you represent our school district and community. Being that similar questions and concerns to mine have been shared with you, the question remains, are you complicit as to the harm the district leadership team is causing, or will something be done about it? Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Jared Dementz. I'm sorry if I missed the pronunciation there.
Oh, Jared Dementz, 2005 LaSalle Street, 54703. I am also here to reaffirm the district's policies regarding the care of its students, specifically trans students. I'm an educator myself, teaching at Lincoln Junior Senior High School in Alma Center, and I feel that a teacher's place should not be to mediate the relationship between parents and children. As an educator, I'm concerned only with the comfort that they feel in my classroom and giving each of them the care that they need, as well as helping them towards the academic success that each of them are capable of. Anything beyond that is not my business. There are very few specific reasons why children wouldn't feel comfortable sharing their gender identity or new names with parents, and I blatantly refuse in my own position to put a child in a situation where they could potentially be abused or feel uncomfortable by their parents. In addition to just my own comfort, it would also open the school to all sorts of liability. So going forward with the lawsuit against the Eau Claire School District, I hope that y'all will stand for them and continue to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum for the evening. We'll now move on to our regular reports. We'll start, as always, with the referendum committee. Commissioner Lyons?
Thank you. The referendum committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we have talked with Abby Director Johnson, and our plan is to send out communication to all board members about proposed plan and getting us out into various schools to have communication information sessions regarding the referendum. So look for that email in the next couple of days.
Thank you. We'll move to our legislative liaison, Dr. Johnson.
On September 6th, Governor, Governor Evers State Superintendent released K-12 state budget priorities listed under the following as priority areas for their funding plan. Improve reading and literacy outcomes, expand access to mental health services in school nutrition, invest in financial literacy and out-of-school programming, help address staff shortages to keep class sizes small, and then increase per pupil and special education aid. On August 30th, Governor Evers announced the release of $90 million in federal funds for Wisconsin school districts. Of those funds, $75 million will be distributed on a per pupil basis, meaning every Wisconsin school district will receive an additional $91.15 in per pupil aid. Eau Claire Area School District allocation totaled $1,026, uh, 1,000, over $1 million. The remaining $15 million will go towards the Get Kids Ahead initiative to provide mental health services in K-12 schools. ECSD allocation was just under $160,000. On August 22nd, the Legislative Council Special Study Committee on Shared School Services held its second meeting with a focus on school district consolidation. Interesting piece there, if you would like to hear. We brought in representatives from the state of Texas and Florida to talk about school district consolidation, to give advice to that particular committee. And my apologies for the humor in that particular statement. A reminder of, to all Eau Claire Area School District, school board members that the Wisconsin Association of School Board Regional Meeting will be held on October 26th in Menominee, Wisconsin. If you're interested in attending, let Terry know. Thank you.
You, Dr. Johnson. We're going to move on to our consent agendas. For each of our consent agendas, the board votes with one vote without discussion. The board has been provided background information to discuss each item after each meeting. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, it can be pulled from the consent agenda. We'll start with superintendent's consent agenda. Items on the superintendent's consent agenda tonight are human resources employment report, gifts in the amount of $15,011.50 for the period of July 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2022, payment of all bills in the amount of $4,485,658.98, and net payroll in the amount of $3,409,642.68 for the period of July 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2022. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
The move.
Second.
Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zertz?
Now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda tonight includes minutes of board meeting, August 15th, 2022, and OE 14, emergency superintendent succession. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
The move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Consent agenda passes. Thank you. We have two items tonight for the remainder of the main portion of our meeting. That is the re-monitoring of R3 and R4 back from April as we realized we had more work that we wanted to do and see to make sure that we could properly assess the district's progress on each of those two results policies. We have designated the rest of the meeting for that. Commissioner Clements, as the third member of agenda setting at the last one, you'll be in charge of taking our notes. I will authorize you all to interrupt me if, after we deal with R3, I don't throw it over to Commissioner Clements to help remind us and make sure that we have everything we need for the end of your superintendent's report on the sheet. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Johnson, and we'll begin.
Thank you. In late June, when we could all take a bit of a breath with our executive team, we went over the notes and video from April's board meeting that Dr. Nordine had discussed. We took down specific questions and comments from all of you that you noted and determined how to address, basically from mid-July until the present. One thing we did is we contacted Chipewa, Altoona, and Sun Prairie about certain hints, especially in there with R3 and R4 specifically. And, for example, we've altered several indicators. And I asked from my conversations with those districts, but also with Dr. Heidi Eliopoulos in particular. She had stated, Mike, in my time at Chipewa and during Brad Sarin's tenure, he's now at Sun Prairie. We've altered several indicators for monitoring reports. That, the way I would advise to place the recommendation on the monitoring report, noting it as an edit, then when the board votes to accept the monitoring report, they are also accepting the edits unless they choose to use motion language to the contrary. So that's why I highlighted certain things in and shifting the indicators. Using the red for the altered, new, and black with a strike through for the old. But ultimately, I composed indicators in the spring of 2022 that were confusing, hard to measure or measured data that we didn't have yet. And even so, at the present time, you know, R3 and R4 were and still are difficult to assess because we are implementing some new programs. Assessments aren't necessarily recommended for some per DPI guidance, and our staff weren't professionally developed. Our staff do need to be out front in this work. We need to be educated. They need to be educated, supported, and brought in. We had made significant strides in that over the spring and the summer. Our academic services department had done tremendous work with many, many staff members. I sought out specifics, feedback from select board members in the past few days, consistent with April's concerns. Two major items that arisen that we must address and we believe we did address and looking forward to share in the documents and the discussion tonight. One, the staff need the professional development resources of time and support for the initiatives. And two, we must develop and support a system that isn't reliant just based on a rock star, teacher or principal at different schools as we gain our new staff. R3 and R4 aren't necessarily lengthy documents like we've had in the past with some OEs. And R2, you know, there aren't 190 pages of them. We're citing certain things maybe from DPI that have quite a bit, you know, 30 to 40 pages, but that's just for the resource itself or the evidence. The items in R3 and 4 are guaranteed and viable across the system. They're not one-offs from specific clubs or opportunities or schools or special programming dependent on one effective department or staff member. So therefore, you know, this programming has to be consistent for us to measure growth and assess for our success overall. And we also have a specific order to the information under the indicator that's a little bit different than the past. We wanted to share the data first, then the evidence, and then narration for, you know, assisting you in further understanding, as we will continue to do with R2 when we revisit that in November for the second year, and all results and OEs in the future. So tonight, we've got Dr. Kaiyang Jong and select staff for R3, especially for the board tonight, to take questions and comments. But, you know, just in summary, a little bit with R3, in determining the certification of making reasonable progress with the exceptions noted for lifelong personal development and growth. Evidence is impacted across many of the indicators due to the beginnings of specific programming, impact of COVID on our students, alignment of activities and assessments, and at times the capacity to collaborate due to COVID at key times in our PD. It's important to note that reporting on student's results 3 differs greatly when it comes to reporting on results number 2 for us. Specifically assessing how our students are faring with their SEL competencies is not recommended by the DPI. However, we do have assessment tools we use to gauge the overall progress of how students are doing with our intended curriculum, but it's difficult to have that reliable data with measuring how students are doing with specific competencies. Yet, you know, we're making reasonable progress with our guaranteed viable SEL programming through our EMLSS framework. Next, that Teaching Learning Department has developed a strategic plan that I've shared with you in the past to operationalize the EMLSS, and it's our approach to creating equitable resources, practices, and outcomes for all students. One of the strategies of that plan is to create a guaranteed viable curriculum in all content areas. By having that within a supportive learning environment, we're all going to have access for our students and opportunities for standards and competencies that align with lifelong personal development and growth. I guess with personal goals, we're making reasonable progress for all pre-K-12 students. We've got different organizational structures like we have in the data evidence for pre-K-12. We have the SEL program using PBIS framework with other SEL integration and practices for our students. For example, through Health and FIAD curriculum, along with Character Strong and Academic Planning Lessons, where we regard that or we refer to that as ACP, all students have access and opportunity to demonstrate their proficiency. The lessons and programs do have formative assessment tools for our teachers to know how students are engaging with the content. Our district-level data that's used to understand where students are with their SEL competencies lie with the data, such as attendance behavior and the youth risk behavior survey. Next, with continuing with R3, understanding and demonstration of students' habits to positively impact their physical, social, intellectual, and emotional health is making reasonable progress with exceptions due to the universal activities and the assessment tools built in. Our Character Strong lessons and activities, ACP lessons, and the Health and PE curriculum allow us to teach, practice, and engage our students with their physical, social, intellectual, and emotional health. The baseline data is collected through YRBS and other data. The YRBS data that was shared with us from 2021 was finally shared in June of 2022. That allows us to establish the baseline data. So back in April of 2022, I did propose the recommended change to policy 3 for itself to align to DPI competencies. We do have exceptions to our reasonable progress. Our baseline data is drafted for this work as we have more capacity to fully implement tools such as Character Strong. We're doing intentional work with staff to provide the in-person professional learning to fully implement Character Strong lessons again. Additional tools or programs that we utilize are ACP lessons using Zello as a platform, while all schools of identified universal instruction activities. Our work this year is to implement the guaranteed viable programs where at least 80% are able to complete, not just access what we had done last year, grade level appropriate benchmarks in Zello. In addition, we're gathering baseline data connected to our systems assessments from instructional framework that will guide this future work. Intellectual curiosity of our students and a commitment to promoting the lifelong learning is one area where we believe, again, we're making reasonable progress with exceptions with EMLSS. We ensure that all students have that guaranteed viable curriculum along with high-quality instructional practices that include differentiation, culturally responsive practice, and layered supports. We have baseline from those secondary schools to show the number of students who are taking dual credit courses to demonstrate their intellectual curiosity. Finally, making reasonable progress with exceptions on development of practical life skills. There are other pieces of data that influence this indicator. We use attendance data for this indicator because when students can develop practical life skills, such as problem-solving, time management, organization, and self-sufficiency, they will commit to attending school to pursue their goals. At that time, that's somewhat of a brief summary. Some of you, it was extremely long. Or we'll have Dr. Jong and some of her staff from Student Services come up to, so you can learn in a little bit more detail with some of the questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Any comments and questions for Superintendent Johnson regarding R3? Dr. Johnson?
Thank you for that summary, Superintendent Johnson. You know, I think for me, you know, as I, as I continue to, continue to examine the documents, could you, could you and/or your staff, I don't know how other school board members find, but just for example, if we go to just R31, indicator 1, and we go, what is this? That's page 6 on this document. Could, could, could the, could you and/or your staff? The example, 33% of secondary schools are implementing PBIS fidelity from the 21, 22, and then you have, you know, a goal of like by May 2024, 100% of secondary schools will implement. You know, I think from a, from a statistical standpoint and also not seeing, I guess, some other supporting document, that's a, that's like a pretty huge jump. You go from, you know, I think in a year's time to go from 33 to 100%. So could you, you talk about our two years time? What's, I guess for me, what I would, what I would like to see or could you just discuss, what's, what's the process that will take place to get to the 100%? Because the goal is fine, but for me, it's the process. And if you can, if you can identify actually that process and how that process is understood and shared across actually the secondary level. Because one would, uh, one would assert that each building is led by different leaders. The makeup of actually the great teachers that we have is particularly different, and they may not actually get to that same point. So I, that, that 100% is, that's a, that's a large ask. I don't, I don't need 100%. Maybe some other individuals on the, on the school board need that because it probably looks good. But can you just talk to me about, talk to me about the process that went into that decision of actually just saying, accusing 100%?
So really, how we got there is every spring, we do what's called a tiered fidelity inventory, and that requires a walkthrough with one of our coordinators at that school and having conversations with groups of staff as well as students to get that student voice and to really match what is happening in the school against the data, the self-reporting data that the staff provide to us through the tiered fidelity inventory that they fill out. Where we felt comfortable saying that 100% of our schools will be there is that PBIS is really that umbrella framework that we have in place in order for students to receive a predictable and equitable learning environment. So first of all, it's very important as that umbrella. Underneath that, then we have the tools like ACP through the Zello platform that Superintendent Johnson talked about. We have our Character Strong lessons. Those are the tools within that umbrella. So in order for our staff to really utilize those tools well, they'd need that structure. They need the organizational structure of the PBIS umbrella, which is why that's where our focus and time and energy will be. Again, we're comfortable saying 100% by May 2024. That gives us really the next two years to focus on our secondary schools. So we have our coordinators in the Student Services Department. We have our directors, like Director Lisa Stake, who is also here, as well as Misty Tollbridge, who is our director. They will lead our coordinators in working very specifically with what we call the leadership slash... slash implementation team at those buildings to make sure that we follow through with what's being asked on the TFI as they take that every spring. They can look very specifically at, here are the features that you need to work on, and those are the features that we're going to work on with them as a team moving forward for the next two years. And we believe that because our secondary schools aren't there, but they are very close. 70% is really what the RTI Center tells us is fidelity. When we look at the tier fidelity inventory, and so we have a couple of our schools that are very close, and we believe that we can do that work with the restructuring and with the work that we are doing through the EMLSS, there are processes and structures that have been put into place to help our schools be successful as well as to help us here at the district office provide that support to those teams at the building. So really, we're talking five secondary buildings. South Middle School is already one of the schools that's almost there, if not right at that cusp. And so we've got, you know, five schools that we can support, and then we believe that we have plans in place to be able to make that happen.
Just to jump in to support Dr. Zhang, Dr. Johnson, we do look at our employability standards. We look at our data, especially when we look at academic and career planning lessons. We have a building-wide team, so we have a district-wide team for academic career planning. We have an in-house team, and then we have an out-of-school team where we have community members coming in and work with us too. So we create those lessons based on the needs of our community and the needs in the data, especially for the YRBS data helps us. And the other piece I can add with that is that every lesson, we looked at the 100% implementation. That means that all the lessons that we developed based on our data and what our students are telling us, those lessons were delivered across the district guaranteed and viable. So that's when we say 100% initial implementation, those lessons were delivered. And it wasn't just we went in and we picked out different lessons. I mean, we really did study our data, and we had, before I came in as physician, the coordinator before worked with our workforce development team, and they looked at, talking with our business leaders, and they talked about, you know, what is it that our students need when you see them in the workforce in your place of business? What skills do they need? And so we took that information back, and then we looked at that, and we also included that into our lessons as well. So we're meeting the needs of our business leaders in the community that might support a little bit of that process and how we came to that.
So is it the understanding that, so implementation means just delivered by features? Is that how we are operationalizing implementation? It's delivered by our staff? Is that kind of how we're defining it?
Fidelity.
Or fidelity. So could you just expand just a little bit more for me? My apologies to my other school board members. I think one of the things that continues to is where's the buy-in process actually like for all of our teachers besides the leadership group, besides coordinators that are going up? Like where's the buy-in process? Because I, for me, you know, and I think this is actually a very cleaner, nicer version than actually what was presented to us in early spring. So a lot of strides have actually been made, but I guess for me, it's just really, where do we get the buy-in and the delivery? And I'm still not sold about having character strong in there without actually having really like the effectiveness of character strong, like the buy-in, because I have to have a middle school and a high school. Success in character strong was delivered or not delivered very differently. And so could you just talk to, how do those, how does those building leaders, your coordinators, how do we ensure buy-in for all teachers? Because all teachers have to actually buy into the delivery of this. Or if we're just talking about just delivering a lesson, the impactfulness of just delivering a lesson, if you have no interest in it, is actually just somewhat, it's somewhat troublesome.
I hear you on that. So it's so much more than buying in. When we talk with our teaching staff and our people services staff and our staff as a whole, it really is about investing in our children, investing in this work, because we have to show that it makes a difference for kids. And when we can show that it makes a difference for kids, we don't have to like make, like feel like teachers have to do it, like it's compliance versus commitment, if you will. I mean, we show that this matters, this makes a difference for kids, and I think most people will invest in this work. And the other part for the secondary piece, especially I think middle school, high school, what I've been sharing with our staff since January, February, but especially now with this new school year starting, when we look at SEL, social and emotional learning, especially at the secondary level, I have asked our team just today or yesterday, I think it's Friday, actually, talking about connecting it to workforce readiness skills. If we can connect SEL at the secondary level, especially to workforce readiness, I think more teachers and staff think, wow, yeah, this really matters. We need to make sure our kids are ready for all post-secondary opportunities and for the workforce. And so that's how we'd need that connection, and it's more than, more of an investment than a buy-in for staff, and more of a commitment versus compliance. And that's where we're at. And Dr. Zhang, would you want to add some more?
Thank you, Lisa. And I will just add that our adults, like all of our students, are at very different places, and because this is universal and it's supposed to be guaranteed and viable across the board, we have taken some very intentional steps to ensure that our staff with wherever they're at, we support them with our professional learning model through the instructional framework, right? So through the coaching, through collaboration, through mentoring, and then the professional development part, that is being unfolded for the most part this year with regards to science, the implementation science pieces, because really what we like to share with our staff is it's not about buy-in. We look at our data, and it's really about what do you need to be ready to take that next step? Because we have to support all of our staff, just like our students with wherever they're at, to say, what do you need to be ready? And maybe this group needs a little something different, but that's really the work of our building leadership teams, because we spend a fair amount of time with them, walking through the work that needs to be done, providing the implementation science PD that we will be given this year. We also now have instructional SEL coaches that all of our elementary buildings, we're working towards that at our secondary schools. Those are the same coaches that then will be with the staff in their buildings every day. So while we don't have the capacity to be their boots on the ground every single day to follow through on this piece, what we can do is all of the work behind the scenes to say, coaches, implementation team members, building leaders, here's the work that we've done. They engage in that work with us, and then they're the same folks that turn around and have a relationship with their building, so they know that people on their teams need different supports at different places. This only goes as far as what we can do here. At the end of the day, that building needs to take the work, and they have to be able to use that work to support their data in their buildings. If all students were at a different spot, I don't think we'd be having this conversation, but because we're in such dire straits with what our children need academically and socially and emotionally, we've done so much work on our end to really help roll this forward in the best way that we can, which, again, when you look through the lens of the instructional framework with the work that's been done this summer, the really, the critical attributes that have been identified, professional learning is one of those pieces. And that's one of the pieces that, again, in order to move all of our staff forward, so it's not just pockets of people, we really need to follow through in the professional learning piece to provide the coaching, the mentoring, the collaboration, and the professional training that's needed throughout this year and in the years to come. This is just the beginning, but we've done a lot of work through teaching and learning to put those mechanisms in place in order to really support all staff with where they're at and move them forward.
Is there a built-in mechanism to, like through character strong to measure? I mean, are we just doing that through student surveying? And I think one of the things that Dr. Johnson brings up, that's a good point, is that, you know, if a program is not working, right, then, you know, we're not going to be meeting our goals with that anyway. So I guess if that exists, that's something I would put as a request for, you know, future years, like when we can start rolling that data. And I know we're in that trial year, and certainly, you know, my two students also reported differences in, you know, fidelity of presentation of some of the character strong, which I can see through a first year and with all the other disruption that we're working. So I'm not holding it over anyone's head. It's just a matter of what you're doing to support. But then I'd like to see, as a board member, as we come to this, you know, this R three and R four are scheduled to come back up in the spring, which is their current regular slot. I'd like to see, you know, if we have some of that data, to start seeing like, is character strong doing the work? Because certainly it's not the only choice. I'm hopeful that it's going to be an effective one. But I think seeing that, we do need to monitor not only fidelity, but also impact. So I guess if that exists, I'd like that, you know, on the like requests, comments for later, and if it doesn't, then I got to wonder what we're going to do to find that, because we need to make, one of our operational expectations is making sure that we're evaluating programs for effect.
Yep, that's a great point, and I think one of the pieces that we've been striving towards, and we know character strong does have those engagement types of tools, and one of the indicators, and now that I'm so nervous I can't find which one it is, but we have it on here as a pre and post-assessment for our staff. So this fall, we will be administering a pre-assessment, really for our staff, talking about really just what you're saying right now is where are you? What do you need to be ready? And we're hoping then in the spring, at the end of implementation science and the work that we'll be doing with that PD, that we'll give the same survey again and be able to match those results. So again, we're hoping that by spring, we'll have two sets of results for you to take a look at with regards to, here's where we started, and here's where we are now. Hopefully, you know, not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but we've hoped that through the PD that we've been able to provide in the coaching, that our staff will be in a little bit different spot. Knowing that last year, again, with the COVID year and with the things that we were doing, that whole PD session was all virtual, and we did get feedback from our staff that that didn't meet the needs of a lot of people. We get that, we understood it, it was just what we had at the time. And so we knew that buildings were probably in very different places in terms of the ability to provide a similar lesson, which is really what we're striving towards moving forward. And we know that the skill sets and the philosophy of our adults in our buildings have much more to do with a process like this than the skill set itself for teaching students. We understand that. It's, we're a large district, and we have to take those steps. And last year was exploration, just kind of get your hands dirty, get to know what the lessons look like. We did the work last year to align then those lessons with DPI competencies. And now moving forward, we're going to be very intentional about the PD, the coaching, and the mentoring that's being provided to hopefully move that step forward. So yes, Sharon Nordin, we will be able to in the spring have two sets of data for you to take a look at, hopefully to say pre and post-assessment, and it is part of what's on R three as well.
Could I just, on that point, I think the other piece here, like I said, this is a huge improvement from what was provided in the spring, but I think the other piece is potentially, potentially missing when we think about how information is actually presented, not only to internal stakeholders, but also external stakeholders. And I'm not sure external stakeholders would be able to kind of interpret actually what's going on here if there wasn't really like comparisons. And so if there are, if there are comparisons of other districts and our, you know, does character strong or purposeful people, do they have their own data set national, right, of where actually the set of middle schoolers, six to 12, actually reside on certain pieces? And then how do we, with this initial data that we potentially will have in the spring, how do we potentially like stack up, right? And so for, as you, as information becomes available to external stakeholders, you have to think about how information is presented in an understandable way. And I think, you know, there has to be, I think, a little bit more in terms of a compare and contrast besides the internal pieces, just kind of where, you know, where are we in the grander scheme of other entities that are utilizing this, this particular approach? And maybe we can actually gather from, gather from that aspect, you know, ways to continue to improve. And I will hopefully zip my mouth until R four and let the rest of my colleagues be.
Also, of course, if there aren't any, then the next phase would be to a motion to approve R three. Is there?
So I agree with Dr. Johnson that this is a beautiful report. Thank you for all of the work that was done on this, both of these monitoring reports. I think what I am, what I have been struggling with, and I'm just looking at my like page of notes that I took as I was reading through this report, is I really struggle to find something in here that I would look at a year from now, or I guess in this case, nine months from now, that I would be able to see and monitor. It's really tough for me to find something that I would be able to see improve. And I think what I'm missing is a lack of specifics. And I say that hesitantly because I love how lean this is. I appreciate narrative, I appreciate the articulation of the goals, I appreciate the breakdown, the universality that you, that the team have put in here. And I don't want to bog it down with complex, you know, data that you said, like hard to measure, hard to capture, right? But I think this is a hard policy to capture. I think this is a hard thing to measure. And just some pieces that I felt were perhaps missing. So I, and this is just, this is just me, is, you know, something that might be reasonable here would be the success of our students in financial literacy courses. Are they taking a financial literacy course, and where is that at in our, in our structure and in our system? I think I'm missing a more grade by grade. We're talking a lot about exploration here within the context of ACP, right? I think maybe R two has more of the plan-go phase of ACP, right? But I think what we're talking about with exploration, I think I would like to see some specific activities within that exploration that's happening, K-12, pre-K-12. And specifically, how are we monitoring the success of those activities for our students? How are we reconfiguring those activities to meet perhaps more learners or more diverse sets of learners? I think one thing that would help me is, is I can't actually see universality of relevant activity. I can see it of relevant instruction, but I can't see it of relevant activity. And that is something, I think the activities are what we can monitor year over year to make sure that we're really reaching our students. And so I think that I would like to support and accept this monitoring report tonight, but really ask that we try to have some sort of, you know, real, I love, you know, just kind of how the SEL competencies are put, and I did email you, Superintendent Johnson, the SEL, and I'm sure you know the employability skill crosswalk within SEL, which is beautiful. Yes, but, you know, I like the grade level sort of like, you know, categories, and even if we could just list some activities, and not only where are they at in extras, right? So in character strong, in ACP lessons, but where are we doing it in the universal curriculum as well? Where are some of these structures embedded universally, perhaps in core content as well? So I think that's probably all I got. One statement and a question, sorry.
So can I just ask a final question? So then moving forward, we are making sure that we're kind of getting at what it is that you're asking for. So for example, with ACP, in third through 12th grade, there are very specific completion standards for each grade level. Are you asking that we list out the standards for each grade level? Because those are the activities that are done, whether it be through Zello or in a lesson, especially at the younger grades? Are you asking for a listing of those activities? I guess we were trying to be high level with, this is what's guaranteed and viable, but not listing, because I think that's what we did in April, was that we listed all of the activities, but maybe not by grade levels. So is that what you're looking for?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. I think, I think what I'm looking for more specifically is at what grade do our students prepare a resume? At what grade do our students take a financial literacy course, and at what percentage are they passing that? At what grade are our students going to college campuses, and are all students doing that, right? This is a future planning, and again, this is, R two has academic ACP in it too, so I don't know if that's better served under, under R two. Point two, isn't R two two? Is it?
Yeah, probably.
I think it is. I think it, I think that's specific related to college, like post-secondary readiness. But I do think that there is a component here, perhaps under, under the last one, you know, six, with some of these more practical skill development activities that are going to serve students in the long term with success. Where are Where are, you know, not only where are we educating? You guys did a beautiful job of showing us where the lessons are being offered. I think what I want to see is where is the relevance being demonstrated from students through activity? And at what grade level is that happening? When are they going out into the community? When are they doing capstone projects that where they would be demonstrating these things? You know, I think that that's, and it doesn't have to be exhaustive. I just think that there's very little for, there's very little here. I mean, attendance is here. I just felt that there wasn't quite enough for me to monitor growth, that I won't be able to see growth year over year with what, with what's here. So setting a goal that's a growth goal with something that we can measure here. You know, there's a little bit attendance, the PBIS, I, I really appreciated that description of the PBIS. That really helped me understanding that ring work and then underneath it, all of these things fall. You know, and like a very easy thing that I noticed, I was looking through the, the middle level, what are listed here in our indicators under 3.5, the ACP guides at the middle level? There's nothing, there's nothing rear planning within those guides at all. I don't know if that's just the wrong title. They're supposed to just be academic guide because when I click on them, they're, they're academic program guides. They're not ACP specific, you know, future planning, it's just coursework. So I'm looking for more like, well, what are those kids doing at the middle level? That's allowing them to practice those lifelong skills, at least something that we can monitor student participation year over year.
I think I'd let you, Dr. John, talk to you for a moment. But I think we, we do, I know we have scope and sequence templates that are created for every grade level, for every activity. And then there's a student outcome product that each student has after the activity. And I could, we could put a link in this for the scope and sequence per grade level. So you could see the learning targets and then the outcome and the activity, because that's all in this template. But we just, and then we also have, I was thinking Wisconsin Education Fair is coming up for juniors. We have, you know, there's, there's a lot we could, and I have, we have the numbers for financial literacy courses. How many students have participated in financial literacy courses?
But yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know if the scope and sequence is probably pretty extensive. That's probably a serious document. But I'm wondering if there are big goals that you have there? If there are things that you have seen with your students where, hey, this is something we really need to nail that you can give to the board and say, hey, this is something, you know, like if only 85% of our students are passing financial literacy courses, right? Example, right? Like that's something that we would want them to be, we, we want that to be big, right? Because that, we know that that's a life success skill, this is life success, right? So I'm thinking things like that of where within specific grade levels, what are activities that have very specific measurable goals that the board can help monitor and, and can then go out and talk to the community about? Well, this is something that we're working on as a district, this is something that we're doing as a district. Because right now it's just, well, we're paying attention to attendance. And the PBIS, which I think most community members would be like, what is that? You know, so I think, I think that it, it's just tough, this is tough to monitor. It's, it's wonderful to read, I've appreciated it extensively to read it and understand it. But I feel it's hard to monitor. It's hard, it's also hard to monitor in general, so. That's my piece on it.
We appreciate the feedback and I think we can certainly have more conversations moving forward. Because again, everything you're talking about are things we have. It's just a matter of how do we package it so that, again, people understand this is the work that's being done? And here's how we're able to follow up and make sure that all of the completion standards are done? And that the number of students doing that increases every year if that isn't already the case, so.
Or if there's a hole, just that we can, you know, be aware of the holes in the work that's being done. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, guys.
We're going on with a motion to approve. I just want to, I just realized I could, we already have it on the agenda, so I can take this. The administration had previously, and it's still in, if you can go to our, if you can go to three, four, a recommendation to the language change for the actual R4. I wonder if anybody has an objection to just putting that on a future consent agenda to make that change? If there is an objection, we can talk about it. We are tentatively scheduling right now for October 17th, a policy, another policy work session that's during our regular time. So if you have an objection or you don't feel good about just putting on a consent agenda in the, in the next couple of meetings, then we can talk about it there. But I just realized this to me seems like a simple change. And Dr. Zhang, I think you're the one who said, you know, this would match better with the DPI. So it seems reasonable. So if there's not an objection, we can just slot it into a, a future meeting to make this change in our core policy. It's a separate action that we'll need to do. Yeah, like I said, if there are objections, we can discuss it and words with it on the 17th also. But I just thought if there wasn't, we can just quickly note that for agenda setting for future. Richard Lyons.
I would make a motion to approve R3 lifelong personal development growth as submitted.
Motion on table, is there a second? Yeah, I'll second it. So we can come back to that discussion if there's, as an objection on the, the policy language, but we can deal with the motion.
I, I object to, to.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just, we'll just put it on the, we can discuss it more at the kind of working session on the 17th. Thanks, Dr. Johnson. So then we have a motion to approve R3 as submitted and a second discussion on the motion.
Can I just make a comment that if Commissioner Clemens, if you could also make a play? I, I, I would also ask that, you know, my fellow school board members, it's okay actually if growth doesn't happen. It's actually okay actually if nothing changes. What's not okay is actually we don't know why. So, you know, I unfortunately, in, in, in education, there's this idea that, you know, internal and external stakeholders, I know it looks probably nice that come spring, we could put up a number that shows better than what it currently is. If it doesn't, I'm fine. What I'm not fine about is actually if we don't know why. And as I mentioned before, I, I think having a clear understanding of those, tho, 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 those processes that impact student learning, but also the development that goes in building our, our teachers proficiency and delivering actually what they need to actually get to this, this place. Whether this is the right place where we need to get to or not, that we can get there. So I, I, if you can just caption that, that, the idea that, you know, it's, it's not necessarily growth is important, but I think the, the process of actually being able to indicate whether or not growth did or did not take place. To me, that's, that's really of, of, of interest and should also be, be considered. Thank you.
The other discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of R3, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. You, R3 is approved. For Clemens, if you would go over the notes that you have and just make sure that we're, we find it sufficient for writing the superintendent review at the end of the year.
Two items I had, I put under, we have strengths, weaknesses and omissions. I put them under omissions for lack of a better place. First being evaluation of character strong and presentation of evidence of impact. And inclusion of any evidence of character strong as a national program and relative position to, in ECASD outcomes as compared to the total program reporting. Item good. Other item was specific actions, activities and indicators, ideally by grade level, that can be monitored for, for tracking progress. Activities have specific identifiable goals that can be monitored and that are indicative of students' success and progress, including how we are reaching a diverse set of learners. Capture that line of commentary. The other comment in quotes I have is it's okay if growth doesn't happen. What isn't okay is if we don't know why.
That's great. That is a quote. Appreciate it. So, yeah.
MJ, after.
Yeah, I know. Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we're good. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You cite as Markwell.
Yeah.
I want growth and.
Oh, gosh, that's great.
Any other board members, comments, does this feel okay for going on? You know, I will, when I draft the superintendent evaluation letter, I will be just basically lifting from these things. So we want it to be complete, that was one of our goals.
I request that the remove quotes be actually, be removed.
Sorry, it's already in the record.
Make sure it's in the record.
If you want to do a formal motion, we can put that on the agenda for future.
All right, it's good.
I reserve some editorial to tailor it when it comes up anyway. All right, so then seeing no additional comments, we will move on at this time then to R4, citizens of a diverse community. And back over to you, Superintendent Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Um, I won't, I won't restate that summary statement to benefit the public. I know you have all reviewed in red. I, I guess what I wanted to boil it down to, the first two paragraphs of that summary report are very similar to R3. What I wanted to add for the third paragraph, talk about the SEL curriculum with respecting diverse cultural norms and values. Character strong, purposeful people are early, early learning resources. Some of them are, they are new to the students and staff in 21 and 22. This went over this quite often, obviously in R3. The part to that is, you know, it's critical that we as a district, and I know we are, and there's been great care and concern to do so, to collaborate with district and school staff members to embed these competencies throughout all curriculum areas. Teachers are responsible for integrating the activities into their daily lesson plans that are aligned to the SEL competencies. Going back a little bit and editorializing, you know, I have conversations with principals often, just had one probably two and a half weeks ago about this, you know, how do we ensure that it's not just a principal here and a pack of teachers there that are implementing this to fidelity? Because to Dr. Johnson's point, and, and all of you have, have students in, in school too is, and, you know, our student representatives, you'll see the same thing and you might express that later on when you're, you're able to speak is, you know, here at Memorial, we do this, and here at North, we utilize this time. And, and, you know, last year was a learning year for some of this, like with character strong. But in speaking to the principals this year, for example, one of them at the secondary level, they said, here are the goals, here are the lessons, and going to the teams to say, how will we, we have to do this, we are going to own this. What's the best way you feel we should as a team to ensure that guaranteed and viable curriculum? So it's putting that out there. The principals are well aware of it, they've had the support of the, our district staff back there for R3 and for R4. There's been an immense amount of work, very proud of the work that they're doing, especially in very difficult implementation phases in the past two years especially. But, so moving on to R4, a little bit more interior, you can scroll down a touch too with, you know, in this, we talk about the ELA curricula, that's been front and center for us, just, just the math, as the math has been too. But then with some of these, with some of these objectives that we're trying to meet with the indicators, it's, it's dealing with social studies as well. Again, professional learning opportunities, and I talked with Dr. Johnson about this beforehand. You know, what are those structures in place? Is it PD Wednesday? Is it summertime work? Is it, I, I believe this week and Executive Director Van Vliet could talk about this too, or, or maybe Director Radke. We've got, you know, English department coming in this week, I believe either tomorrow or Wednesday. Pardon?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay, close. To be able to, to work, and it could be a variety of things, like I said. Could it be PD Wednesday? Could it be PDIP days? Could it be, yeah, I, I'm really proud of the work that we've done this past summer and for the instructional framework, which really encompasses all of it, where we had 65 of our district staff members get together. The world belongs to those who show up. These people showed up over the summer, everybody was invited, and I get it, people, you know, people can't do it for various reasons. But to have 65 people there that day, those six days or those five days across the summer for those afternoons takes a lot of time. So I guess I just want to skip ahead a little bit more with, I'm sorry, to go back just a little bit with the, with the last two or three. You know, with the, with the civics exam, you know, that'll be fairly easy to share in graph format. The behavioral expectations and policies creating their classroom matrix annually, I know the attachment that was in there too. Rules before relationships leads to rebellion. So right now, I would assume that our, and I, and I know this at some of our levels, is that our staff members are developing, they're getting to know the students, relationship building. And then, okay, what are your, you know, what are the expectations? What should we have as a class? It's really interesting to see that across elementaries and middles for the most part lately. I have not been in high schools, you know, to see that work over the first couple of days. I'm just going to say it, when I was a high school teacher, I was kind of, I gotta get my syllabus out. But really, it, it's really interesting to see that throughout our system. And then TFI is mentioned in there, and I think Dr. Zhang had mentioned that too with, with that. Another thing where I'd gotten input, collaboration and student voice are necessary throughout many of ours, many of the Rs and the OEs. Sought during components of the newly formed Superintendent's Youth Advisory Council in the 2223 school year. We're representing fifth graders from across the district, six through eight at a different time, and then nine through 12 at a different time. You know, we can get some information that way from these students, reflective of our district demographics. It's fun for me, it's fun for our executive directors, or it will be, they haven't experienced it yet, and our directors as well. So anyway, moving forward with environmental literacy and sustainability revised in May of 2018. But again, per DPI guidance, we cite that, Academic Services Department can provide updates as well. So again, I'd like to invite Exec Director Van Vliet, she's got a couple of her team members there when we have specific questions. But going back a little bit to how R3 had finished, your comments that you've shared here tonight. Now, now, R3 and R4, that was the, that was pretty much our last OEs or Rs for the year. So it's kind of interesting, and I shared this with Dr. Nordin before the board meeting tonight. Director Yang and, and I had gotten together and were preparing for OE2 next week, next Monday. And it's really nice for me to use your comments at the very end. It's great to hear the positive things, but what areas can we improve upon where we are fearless? We are making some decisions here and we're, we're showing that we're making progress. We have to be explicit in that. So it helped, and he's nodding right now because I'm kind of, but we talked about that where that's a really important part of this. So I do appreciate your comments and Josh taking notes and Tim to be able to finalize that. It helps me, it helps our directors and our teams, and ultimately it helps our kids. So thanks so much for that time for the introduction. And any questions for R4 for Director, Executive Director Van Vliet or her staff?
I'll answer questions.
One.
Mr. Sir.
Um, looking at 4.2 ELA standards. One of the things, and I believe this has an easy bridge probably into OE2, into our equity commitment. But how are, I'm assuming that we're using a literacy curriculum of some form, district level. How are we monitoring the success of that literacy program? So, so that we can really understand. I, I mean, I, I view literacy as the gateway to, to equitable education. I think it's one of the found, it's the, you know, a pillar of, and what we need to do it very well. I think we're seeing that from the state level too, with the governor, some of the governor's priorities. So within this here, I think that this is probably a lot embedded in the ELA curriculum. And specifically in, in not only, there's a literacy component here with this. So without seeing that listed, can you, can you speak to that?
I sure can. So one of the steps of our strategic plan is to establish a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which is just one really important piece to having equitable education for our students. The second piece as part of our, well, not The second piece as part of our, well, not second, but just another piece of part of our strategic plan is to, in order to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, you have to have contents on a yearly or a process for review. So we're currently in the process of putting all content areas on a review process, likely going to be a seven year, um, review process. That is reviewing the curriculum documents and updating the curriculum documents that support, um, that particular content. Along with that though, is also program review. So we're also in process of putting all of our programs on evaluation for, um, what's working, what's not working, um, what do we need to adjust? So this piece that we mentioned here references the standards and such, and that is really key. But then the second piece is evaluating, uh, program as well. So, um, evaluating our ELA program is, is one of the steps as part of this as well.
Is there, what, sorry, have a follow up, of course, what would be, what would, what would that evaluation look like if it were shared with the board? You know what I mean? If we knew what, where, like, if, if that, if the outcomes of that process, of that review process were shared with the board, would that be? I feel like I, I don't want us to go down a, a thing of, you know, getting a hundred and seventy five pages. I don't want us to be there. But I'm wondering, um, because I don't see a mechanism in here where we would see, um, you know, some of the updates that are being done as part of the strategic planning process and the guaranteed and viable curriculum, some of, we would, would we ever know that the curriculum has been updated or changed or being changed? So what would that process look like if, if we were to see something like that as an artifact in here?
I think what I, um, you're asking about, so if this doesn't answer your question, um, let me try to clarify. So what we hope to have, um, soon is a, all of our content areas on a seven year rotation. So there would be a document that would document that process. So you'd be able to look at that and say, oh, in, um, twenty twenty six, science is going to be, um, documents for science are going to be rewritten and updated. So just like that, we will be doing the same thing for our program review. You could look at that document that we create that you would see, um, the science program is going to be up for review in twenty twenty eight or whatever year or cycle that we, um, develop that. So that would be an artifact that I think is what you're looking for. You could look at all content areas and know when they're going to be reviewed and, um, what that process would entail. I would love to be able to show that to you right now, but we are in the process of developing all of that as part of our strategic plan.
I think I could interject a little bit because I've had to live this in a different position. What it looks like if we were to attach, we gave a sampling of certain essential standards. Walked into it the first couple of days we were out of school, English department, I believe, English department was in, I think it was the first day or two after school was out, um, secondary level. I think it was me, yeah, it was secondary level. When you take the standards and you're in that review process, how do you know the kids get those certain, well, you develop common formatives and or common summatives. I mean, that, that seemed to be the progression that, that I had used in previous, previous districts. Don't want to micromanage here, but I know that those are the discussions when I was there that day, June eighth, ninth. You know, going through and attaching those in the marker board was cool. Sometimes it's as informal as if you're in the middle level and your teams have a break in class and you're talking to somebody across a hall, like, hey, my, what it will look like is that one of our, you know, seventh grade ELA teacher, seventh grade ELA teacher, hey, did you guys take the formative assessment? Boy, my kids really nailed numbers one through eight, but on number nine for that standard, they just didn't get it. How about yours? That's how sometimes informal it can be. But then for us to actually have that data, and especially a, a system this large, it takes some time. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of planning. I would think more from a summative assessment, that's what it could be. But in my past life in River Falls and Woodbury, those were the types of things when we had our review processes going and, and staff were examining standards, attaching activities, making sure that the, uh, that the resource in the curriculum was rigorous enough, those are the types of things that will follow suit. Where you can pick, okay, for the sampling of grade six, when we get moving on it, I know we're always moving, but when we get it completed, we could be able to say that. I can't give a timeframe because I'm not involved in the process, they are. But I know that they're meeting and I know that the work that they were doing, the foundations were occurring this summer for at least two solid days straight in the summer with ELA. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
We had many teams coming together this summer to write curriculum.
Yeah, that's just one content area with really six through twelve. So now we've got, you know, a, a whole host more teachers as well.
I'm just wondering if there's something in between the weeds of the day to day and this very high level where we could monitor the success, where we could see the success of the ELA curriculum, you know, specific to this sort of, you know, I mean, this, this is, this is even a harder one to, again, these are hard to measure. There's not, you know, specific like, can you add? It, it's, so I, I understand that this, these are hard things to measure, but at the same, I'm just wondering if there's something in between. That's why I was wondering if there would be with, with the curriculum review process. So rather than the board seeing it, you know, we would just see which ones were being monitored for that year and it would get on this cycle. So we would see science when science came up and we would see ELA, whatever, maybe that's not here. But ELA specifically, you know, what is the documentation of what you felt was needed growth, you know, needed to be changed or, or tweaked and why? What's the data set attached to that? And then what were the changes made and why? You know, if we were viewing a program, um, you know, why did we choose to change that program? You know, what were, what was the data set around why we, we felt that that program wasn't needing our student needs? And, and I think with ELA, um, and this is, you know, again, this is a literacy component. What, you know, what is our, our literacy program and how are we monitoring that success with something, you know, not necessarily that day to day, you know, standard competency activity. We, I don't think we need to see that level of detail, but there's some, there's got to be something in between this very high level standard and, um, where we can monitor growth or non-growth, uh, over time. You, you know, I maybe I'm, I don't know, it's an idea or something, I don't know.
The way that we approached R four is through creating a guaranteed and viable curriculum. That's really where we need to start in our district because we don't have one. And it's, our, our students deserve one. And I believe in conversations that we had in a few years when we do have, um, a guaranteed viable curriculum established in, in hopefully many of our content areas. Some of these indicators can shift to get more specific, but right now we can't do that because we don't have a curriculum that is guaranteed and viable, and that takes time to establish that as a district. And we do believe that that is the right work, that is an equitable practice for our students to have that. And I'm thinking that when we do go through a review, um, for example, we're in the process of doing a world language review. We, we, we will have artifacts to show you in that sense on the process that we went through. Actually, just today in conversation, we were thinking about ELA and when we would have the capacity to look at our ELA curriculum and go through a review process. Once we go through that review process, we would have many things to show you. And one of them, as you go through a review process, is to look, do you have a guaranteed and viable curriculum? Are your standards aligned? They may or may not be, and from the review process, you might be determined, it might be a determine that you need to go back and realign your standards. Or it might be, you need to look at your resources that you're using to help teachers deliver the content. And then we might be looking at a resource purchase and such. But when we do a program review, we would certainly be able to use that as evidence and artifacts when it is aligned to a certain policy. That would be helpful.
Yes, that's, that's very helpful to understand where, where we're at. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Lyons.
I think a lot of this is, is somewhat difficult to measure, but I did want to make a statement on R four point five. And that students will understand and display ethical behavior. And I noted in the edits that we're really focusing on teaching through social studies. And I think students can well understand what ethical behavior is, but are they displaying it? And I think that the displaying of ethical behavior is actually connected to what's been lined out, which is some of the student discipline data. And I think that it might be helpful to have some very high level summary data on what's happening with student disciplines so that the board can take a look at that. I don't think it's realistic for that to, to decrease every year. But if the board's measuring it and looking at it and there's big jumps or big declines, I think that will then spark some of the conversation of what's happening with the displaying of that ethical behavior. So I don't know why it was lined out. I think it's actually a good indicator that will measure that. Um, and I would advocate that maybe we, we add that back and.
I can provide some context on why we did X that out, and certainly your feedback, um, moving forward on, on what we include will be important. We got really hung up on the word ethical. So when we look at our student discipline data and what is recorded and documented for discipline data, you know, to help us understand what, um, students are needing and who, what. It doesn't, when a, when a child is displaying certain behaviors, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're unethical. And we really struggled with calling all student data unethical, like that, that was not comfortable for us. Students in school are here to learn and make mistakes, they learn from their mistakes. And connecting the word ethical with student data or student discipline data made us uncomfortable in doing so. And it's just because of that word ethical. So there, we did talk about that and we felt like that does connect, but more so in a way, students are going to make mistakes and they, and that we document that as a way of understanding what they need and what supports we need to put in place in our system to help them do better the next time. So that's where we struggled with that one, and that's why we removed that. But if you provide us different feedback, we can, um, consider that as well.
I'll jump in and say, I think it is appropriate that it's removed. This was one of the things that I talked about in, in the spring, that student discipline data is not, that's a certain result for a certain conversation. I think it's appropriate that we know what's going on. I think it fits well when we come to, you know, OE five, which is student learning environment, right? Your, your task is a safe and, you know, I think it certainly is appropriate that we look at student discipline data through the lens of OE two because we know that we have disproportional data that's coming through on several levels of student discipline as well as other, you know, gaps that we have to be, be working on. But again, I think you're exactly right with the idea that, that student discipline may be a tiny facet of ethical behavior. There are probably some students, but I, I think that this allows it to bigger. My only, I agree with you though, Commissioner Lyons, that we don't have right now, and maybe this goes to what you were saying as well, commissioners, where we don't have any evidence to show the display part of it, and maybe that, that needs to be developed. So I think my challenge is, how do we develop that display to show that we, we are, that students are using what they're learning here? But I appreciate, and I, I, I fully appreciate dropping that data from this because that's not, you know, to say, well, seventy percent of our students didn't get in any trouble that year, that's lowest possible version of what ethical behavior would be. So I, I would say, I, I want to know that, and certainly if we're having spikes or if something has gone way out of whack or something like that, but I think it's appropriate in the OEs as opposed to the, for me. I'll go to Dr. Johnson and then maybe you like, if that's okay, then I will come back to you after Dr. Johnson, yeah.
And then. You have a counter.
Well, I understand, um, what you're saying and a large portion of what you're saying, um, I agree with. But I think that there's also some actions you can de-aggregate, such as cheating or stealing, that obviously I think are unethical behaviors. I, it, when I was talking about very summary data, it would be major discipline infractions that you would, would identify as a, as, as a whole. And it, it doesn't necessarily need to be by school, it doesn't need to be, it, it, it just needs to be a trend line so that the board has very thirty thousand feet understanding of is what we are teaching then being reflected in student behavior? And if, if we don't do that, then we should, we should just remove display because we have no way to know.
Dr. Johnson and then Dr. B.
Yeah, so I, uh, you know, and it's interesting, uh, the conversation you said that your group had, because I, I am of, uh, of the thinking, I, I, my question is actually, I, I'm not really sure, I, why ethical is in. We, we, we operate, some of us do, and this is, this is, this happens on our, we, 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 we operate that like there's, there, there's, there's a universal understanding of ethics, or there's a universal belief in ethics. Ethics are not universal. They're shaped by individual experiences and by actually the cultures that actually hold them actually to be ethical. I, if, if display appropriate behavior or whatever, like, so for me, however we go on this argument moving forward, whether it's display or not, like, I, the removal of ethical, because what, 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 what I view as ethical actually with it, I'm pretty sure there's some common ground, but there would be complete differences. And there's, there, there, there's, there's differences actually how each individual teacher within their classroom environment potentially views behaviors that ethical and they're actually displayed by certain types of students. And so I, I just had a question mark, like, do, do we have to use ethical there in, in, in four or five? But if that was, if that's aligned with like other, other places, I get it, I, I just, I, I am not of the belief there's, 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 there's universal ethics. There's not universal morals. Morality is not universal. However, you, you, it, it's just not, I, if, for me, in my perspective. But could we go back? The question I had on four, four one.
Can we go to Dr. B? Because I think she wanted to talk about this particular thing, and then we'll come back to you if that's all right with you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, this is complicated things quite a bit for me. So I just wanted to acknowledge, I appreciate, I agree that discipline data has its place, but not here. I appreciate the shift in focus to what we want students to do rather than what we, focusing on what we don't want them to do. From my discipline, there are universals in ethical behavior in world, there are human universals in my discipline from moral and ethical behavior. I'll leave it at that.
All right, Dr. Johnson, back to your, you said four one, I think.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I, so the other, the other piece here, so can you just explain to me the jump? From if you go to four one and then it looks like we, uh, uh, your team decided to make the jump as well. But when we, so I'm using four one as example. So this evidence or sam, sampling of, so the example that you give for grade two is actually like as it, as it relates to, as it relates to four one, kind of makes sense. But then like the jump in the secondary level to like career planning in a diverse workforce, that's a huge shift. A workforce where, you know, like, you know, like, I, 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 for me, when we think about like this, this indicator, value respect diverse cultural norms of, from a workforce? I look at the K five one, like, ah, that's actually pretty good. But then I look down at six, twelve, you know, the academic, academic career planning. That's, that's individual based and potentially the, the career that you pursue or the interests that you pursue may not actually. That's individual based and potentially the career that you pursue or the interests that you pursue may not actually. I just, I was just curious kind of how that process, isn't there, is there something that has a little bit more depth? At the six 12 level, similar to the, the, that school counseling curriculum piece in the K five? And then the other piece that I had, I not issue, I just want to know. In the sampling, could you just give an example of how do teachers talk about? And what's the discussion? So learners will be able to, and it shows up a couple of times, show awareness of being part of a family and a large community. How much detail do we go in? Because families actually defined differently. So, you know, first part of my first 11 years, traditional family, mother and father. After that, actually, single parent, divorced parents, as a result of socioeconomic standards. And, you know, result of actually that pandemic, we have multi-generational homes, same-sex parent home. Like do, if, I guess the use of family, like we do go into a little bit more like flexibility in terms of kind of how that's like delivered and defined, you know, for, you know, for students, right? And so it's probably more or less, I do want to know how, because it's in four one, I think in four six where we have like this pretty detailed, a little bit more depth in alignment with the whole diversity or the large picture of diversity at the K five level. But then in a case, like, I mean, the six 12, we could just jump into like workforce pieces. Could you just like talk, like how did you, how'd you guys make that distinguishing jump from having those in-depth pieces at that K five and then kind of where, and if it's understated, if it's the piece, and this is where I completely agree, if it's, this is where you have data, is probably unlike everyone else, one of the missing things here is the reason why you move to something is actually because you don't have information. And or the information that you have, you can't make sense of. And so I would view actually the current state of actually not having information that makes sense to actually move in a direction is the reason why we're in a wait and see stage. Because from an assessment standpoint, you really actually don't make actually like goals and objectives actually without like present data. Like you don't do that. But once again, we all were probably trained differently, I think, you know, like I, and I trust my five graduate professors that I had. They were like cruel during my time of actually school, so maybe they did actually took it out, took it out on the show. But if you could just talk about that jump between just the K five and cases, like why there was, there's that depth in that alignment. And if it's data, you have it, actually that's, to me, that solidifies for now. But then what I would ask or my request would be if you could write down is we have to have a little bit more detail, like moving forward.
Okay, I'm going to try to answer those questions that you have. We moved in this direction of connecting our SCL competencies or our standards, because that's really the first step that we're at. We can't even begin to assess these things when we don't even, every classroom would be assessing something different because we have not aligned the standards or we're in the process of having the SCL competencies are new to us. So attaching them to core content or content areas is a new process for us. So that is the way that, like I said, we wanted to approach R four. In the future, when we have that established curriculum and we have provided professional learning for our staff, we hope to be able to have, you know, increase or different indicators to measure our success with these things. Because many of the policies are very difficult to measure anyway. And DPI doesn't recommend us measuring those in the first place. So it is challenging. The second piece to that is the examples for the K five. I see what you're saying by a jump. Those are just examples of lessons that touch on those particular areas. So I would refer to Lisa Steed to ask, or Dr. John.
I can talk.
Okay, perfect.
If I may, the, I think the jump is because we didn't make the explicit connections. Really at the six 12 level, academic and career planning lessons are the equivalent of K five counseling lessons. And so while at the six 12 level, because of the structure of those classrooms, our counselors are not delivering those lessons, but they are putting the lessons together that tie to the workforce development standards as well, which is why that example was put in there. But really it's the character strong lessons and then ACD lessons are the equivalent of what six 12 or K five have for counseling lessons. So that's the connection there. We connected the workforce development piece just as a sample, because those competencies also show up there where we're talking about, you know, what students learn to value their respect for diverse cultural norms and values. Those also show up on character strong lessons as well as the DPI competencies, as well as workforce development standards that are listed. So that's a little bit of a jump, I think, if we don't understand the connection, but that's really the equivalent of our K five counseling.
I think Commissioner Johnson, you had a question on the SCL competencies, the sampling that we provided. And for example, the one that was listed, I think for pre-K around family and larger communities. So one of the things as we identify these certain SCL competencies and connect them to content areas and establish them as part of the curriculum, we can understand the professional learning that teachers need to then turn around and deliver the content. But when we have not yet identified those, it's hard to understand what teachers need assistance with in order to deliver it. So in our work moving forward, the SCL competencies will be connected to ELA, social studies, the ones that we've listed here. And the expectation would be then that they're embedded in their instruction. Once those documents are established, then we can support the teachers in delivering that information.
Just that one thing that I would like listed as a strength for this one, and maybe you can go back and put it on three as well, is that I do feel like, and we've heard it mentioned, Dr. Johnson mentioned it for our three, that these two reports have been very responsive to the needs of the board. I think certainly as a board, we didn't well know in the spring what we needed in order to get there. And I do think, you know, it's made real improvement to helping us get there. I think we've seen some things that we still need and we do anticipate them growing out. I think you're anticipating them growing and showing things as we get off of the start line, as we get to that universal, the viable guaranteed curriculum part of it. But I do want it to be pointed out for the, for the summary of this, that these very responsive and that we can see the work that went into them. You know, and even as there's places where we want to do better or where we want to see additional items or where we still need more information to really get a whole picture, but I do want that just pointed out that these are much stronger and it is a good sense of administration helping, helping the board to be able to monitor the progress of the district effectively. Dr. Beaker.
I want to express appreciation in the original form in R four. So many of the activities were concentrated at the secondary level, largely kind of absence at the elementary, so that's been a major shift. And how much now is embedded in sort of what we do as opposed to relying on, you know, the extras? So that's another really big shift. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner.
Just one more thing, I guess, for the record, Eric Clements. And I think to what you said Chair Nordine is, is I think what these have established is sort of this, and what I've heard kind of consistently from you, Dr. Van Leed, is where we are at with, there's a lot of work to sort of get to the place where, okay, let's see the impact of this work. There's a lot of work just to get to like where we would like to be. And I appreciate that that work is happening and I appreciate that it's articulated that it is happening. I think that, I feel like perhaps that could be more clearly articulated as a goal here within these documents somewhere. Because, you know, it took, it took questioning for me to even understand like, oh, oh, okay, now I see kind of where we're at and why these look the way that they do. So perhaps, and just, just for longevity, just, you know, whether it's in that narrative piece or it's in a specific goal section of some of these indicator beautifully organized sections, is just to get to a place, you know, a goal to establish guaranteed and viable curriculum. You know, that's what we're working towards right now so that next year we have something to come back to, to say, rather than me having to write it down and then put it in notes and remember next year that that's a component of this. That it's a piece of, I said, it's a piece of it, I think would be helpful moving forward. Just if there are big pieces like that, big goals, how can we articulate them in here very clearly? So that we can monitor them, because it's, you know, it's possible that a couple of us might not be here next year, you know? So it's just how do we make sure that we maintain that continuity for future board members?
Commissioner Zer, could I ask you a question just for clarity on that one? So for example, let me actually go to four point five. So our goal, like for example, we were only able to do one grade level this summer in social studies. So our goal by August of 2023 is to have all of the grade level curriculums updated. Is that not a goal that you're looking for? You can see that currently we have seven point seven grade levels have updated curriculum guides.
Oh, no, that's perfect, actually. I just completely missed that. No, that is, that's really wonderful. I was thinking maybe if there's, if there's a larger component to that, like to something that's happening behind the scenes with these policies, you know, if it's articulate, I think maybe I just missed it in the page break. But if that, you know, if that's a bigger picture thing, if it can maybe make it into the superintendent's narrative of like, this is a larger goal of something that's happening behind the scenes, so we can understand the context of what we're reading here. No, but that is actually quite lovely. Thank you for pointing that out, Nikki.
I just wanted, needed to be more information to help clarify, that's why I wanted to.
No, I think, I think that's, I think that's helpful. I'm just wondering if. No, that's good for now, yes.
Eric Clements, your questions, otherwise we are right on schedule for motion to approve R four.
I think I'm up to.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the approval of R four, say aye. Aye. And opposed? The abstentions? If you were approved, Commissioner Clements, if you would go through the rundown on the summary report to make sure we feel good for this superintendent summary.
Under strengths, the revised version of the monitoring report is responsive to comments and feedback provided by the board. Related improved provision of indicators at the K five level as compared to the first version of the report, which concentrated on the secondary level. And improved focus on what we do versus relying on extras. Is there more context to provide or?
I think, can you put like, just for my sake, can you put extracurriculars? Because then as I write, that'll make sure that I know what's meant by, I realize that's not all broadened, that will help me just for context.
Under weaknesses, I had for R four point five, display of ethical behaviors. Narrative describes teaching methods but not student behavioral outcomes. And we do not have any evidence or indicators to display current condition and progress in terms of student behavior. Additional one we just discussed was the improved description or in the superintendent summary of the contextual goals to describe what we are striving towards, such as the viable standard curriculum.
In viable.
Guaranteed viable curriculum. To aid in understanding how and the context of the proposed indicators and evidence selected. And I had a note started on four point one, I think earlier in our discussion, but I didn't capture what the feedback was that maybe related to four point one. It was, Commissioner Johnson was.
Oh, you said that. So that the transition from an in-depth alignment with, as an indicator, K five to the six to 12, to the workforce. But also I think the piece that was the concern, I think, you know, it was just some of the examples that were utilized in terms of, and the K five example, the sampling and the terminology of like family. Like, but I really, I think for me, what was big there, if it's going a little bit, and you know, I think Dr. John talked about, and I'll just have to do a little bit more digging myself, but the equivalent of that K five counseling curriculum is a shared, some shared pieces from ACP and Character Strong. But I think I just still need to, I just think the diversity workforce piece, I think there's further elaboration that's desired there, so.
So is it fair to say something along the lines of, you know, maybe provide some additional examples within some of those?
Examples.
What are we going to put down?
Provide, provide, I think, provide additional alignment other than actually the workforce diversity for secondary. I think that's really for me.
So I have there provide additional alignment in addition to the workforce diversity secondary indicators for R one. So nothing further on connecting shared competencies between?
No, that's all right. Yeah, then the terminology thing, I think, I have a brief word with Dr. What's that? I see Yang back there, but making sure that we potentially can work on utilization of family a little bit more.
You missed.
Commissioner Clements, you can email those over to me to fill out my summary statement when I get the form. Harry will make sure those get in there. At this time, we'll move on to our regular debrief. And once again, Commissioner Clements, you are facilitator for that tonight.
Well, we circle back here to two evaluation items that we discussed previously a few months ago. And I think this was our first chance of really, that I can recall that we really dug into a couple of evaluations after getting through our first superintendent evaluation under the system and provided some feedback that we really needed to see this again. So I felt like I learned a lot trying to compare these versions versus the other ones. I think a lot of the comments that I had initially were reflected. I still don't feel like I completely understand everything that's in here, but it was played out much better for me. The purpose of this time is also to discuss how we feel like we're doing as a board, how, what we did well, it could do better. With that, I'll pass over to Commissioner Zer and we'll come around this way.
Yeah, well, I guess what we could do better, it was always really like the first meeting where our school reps are here is always like, I always feel like I just want to come over and like whisper in your ear about what's going on, like this is what this means. Because it's so much and it's so confusing and I just will say like hang in there, some of it will click eventually. And just let us know if you have any questions, because it is kind of an awkward venue for you guys first time and especially like big, meaty, lots of jargon and like there's, I think someone in a funny thing once said like a, it should be like a jargon giraffe or something in education, because we just use like letters mushed together all the time. So if ever you need to lean over to Commissioner Clements there and ask him what it means, he can lean over to Dr. Beaker. You'll get it eventually. As far as I have always kind of wondered what these monitoring reports were actually going to end up looking like for us, because they're really tough. were actually going to end up looking like for us because they're really tough to monitor. They're just not something easy. They're not typical data sets. They're, they're, they're hard and they're tricky. Um, and, and the one thing that I was really pleased with what, what we got out of this versus what we had in the spring, um, and this is really a kudos to the team, um, but also to the board to say, hey, this wasn't quite right. This wasn't quite what we were looking for. I think what we have here is more evidence of universality and we're really seeing the breadth of what we're doing, uh, for our young kids all the way up to our graduates. So, um, I, I felt really good about that. But still, I just still just don't quite know how to monitor these results. It's just tricky.
I, I defer.
Uh, welcome to the, to the student reps. It's great to have you here. Um, I, you know, would, would, would echo a little bit of what Erica just said about the monitoring of these being really difficult. Sometimes I wonder if we're not counting, not with these particular reports, but we have so many OEs and so many Rs and, uh, it just, uh, it gets a little overwhelming sometimes.
One of the, one of the goals of being in this governance model is for the board to spend much of its time talking about student results and really focusing on that and then talking about policy. And I think the thing that we, the example of doing it well, that what we did well tonight was we were doing those things. We were digging in, we were talking about what are the results for our students? How can we actually see the impacts of our students? How can we measure the impact of programs on students? We're having that discussion as a board, helping to clarify what it is we want. We're also talking about policy and we're having, you know, maybe disagreements about what should the policy look like or, or, you know, can we take a wording change straight in or do we need more discussion to try to, to see? And I think those are the things that we, when we spend our time talking about the impacts of the district on our students, then we can clarify the expectations and the, for the administration to actually, that's what we want is for our district to produce the best students in the state and the best students in the country. You know, we want, we want O'Clare to be successful. And I think when we spend our time doing that, that's, that's a real strength that I, and I don't think we're there, we're not experts at it. We're still learning, how do we monitor? All of us are wondering, what does this look like? And I think the thing that we need to continue to work on is, you know, the documents. Where do we need to continue to ask for layers in our indicators or other pieces of evidence that we didn't realize or that we're coming to realize we need to focus on? Because certainly as, you know, times shift, uh, and we need to continue to evolve both our policies and the documents beyond that. Uh, and I think that is just an ongoing challenge, but it seems like we're up to it and I'm sure future boards can't be as well.
Yes, attending the, the last meeting when these items were discussed as a candidate and now I am sitting here, a different version of those documents. And, uh, I, I see the, the board on a real learning curve in, in trying to use the framework to benefit students. And it's not something that will happen overnight, you know? So I think all of the questions that were asked tonight about the data that we looked at and the reports we looked at, um, I think it shows real genuine collaboration between the board and executive team and the district, that we all have, um, some shared goals here. And we are all so earnestly invested in our students' best interest. And for me, that is the greatest positive, that I, that across these, um, these agreements about terms and how we represent, uh, student growth and to represent their, their learning and how we document that, that all of us do have this shared goal to do the best by our students that we possibly can. And so that doesn't mean that, uh, the best thing is, is to, you know, agree the first time, that the best thing is, is to keep trying to get it right and that all of us continue to come back here over and over and over again, uh, and to keep try, keep trying. Uh, and I think that, um, that persistence and, um, persistence in community is really powerful.
Yeah, to, I don't know, tonight is a turning point for me. I think this ranks up there as one of the best and most unique workshops I've ever attended. I imagine, it's not all positive. I mean, imagine being back when I started in 17 and 18. I don't think, it's hard to imagine we would have had a conversation like this, the interaction among board members and same with between, you know, staff members and board members. I don't think we, we could have ever done something like this. And, uh, I'm, the process of going through kind of the second round on these policies, I'm worried in the sense that I think we could use a second round on all the policies like this. Uh, I'm not even sure that they don't all need a third round. And I feel like now that we've, for me, um, going, how do you monitor it? I don't know. But it seems like this is where the, like, the hard, the hard work really starts now and the vulnerability and just getting it all out there. And I think for me, I, I think I need to go in a way that when we were writing these policies, really studying what other districts were doing. It's like now going back and doing that again, but how are they monitoring, you know, those that have been doing it for years? And I guess just what I hope is that, um, maybe we can, every one of these policies, we can like push it through just like we did these tonight, you know, where everything's up for change, like everything's on the table with all of these policies again in these next, you know, this next round or whatever. That's kind of what I'm hoping for.
You, everyone, thank you, Commissioner Clements. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. We adjourn.